YouTube. There you go. Now you got it. I think I think we're good now, Greg.
Oh, when you're muted, are we good to go? Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Finance and Claims Committee of the No More Common Council. For today, Thursday, September seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, beginning at six oh four P M. We'll start with the roll call of the Common Council Finance and Claims Committee members. Councilmember Norah Nigelski-Eichner. Councilmember Jen McMur is present. Thank you. Councilmember Ed Camacho.
I'm here.
Is present. Thank you. Councilmember Diana Revolus.
Present.
Councilmember Brian Meek.
Here.
And thank you. And Councilmember John Kites.
Here.
Thank. And myself is present, Greg Burnett. So we have a quorum. Thank you. Moving on to item three in the agenda is public participation. We did not have any comments submitted in prior to the meeting. And I do not see anyone as an attendee waiting um to join uh and speak during public participation. So at this time, I will close public participation and move on to item four in the agenda. Uh, item four is a uh is to recommend and refer to the common council a special capital appropriation in the amount of two million nine hundred thousand dollars for the public schools for the acquisition of six properties, abutting the proposed South Normal School and other project-related purposes. The actual resolution that we'll be voting on reads as follows. Uh, item four A, authorize the allocation of two million nine hundred thousand dollars in special capital appropriation funds in the normal public schools for the acquisition of six properties abutting the proposed South Normal School as identified herein this memo. This capital appropriation shall be funded through two million nine hundred thousand dollars of authorized but unissued general obligation bonds or notes of the city. The two million nine hundred thousand dollars of bonds or notes of the city shall be issued in accordance with the provisions and terms set forth in the original bond resolutions that authorize the issuance of the bonds or notes of the city for project account number as noted. And also, item four B, approve the deauthorization in the amount of two million nine hundred thousand dollars from free balance in the Jefferson School Improvement Project Capital Budget Account as noted. Do we have a motion on these two items?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Diana Revolus. And we're ready for discussion and we have with us Darren Callahan, our legal counsel um uh to lead the discussion on this item.
Sure, great. Thank you, our council member Burnett. Um, so uh I think members of this committee are well aware that this the this city is uh um mid-process um mid-public approval process uh for approving the acquisition of properties that um uh essentially uh abut and surround um One Meadow Street Extension, which will be the um future home of the South Norwalk uh Elementary School. Um, uh, which is slated to be in construction, I believe, um sometime next year. Um, the the properties specifically are twenty-eight, thirty-two, thirty-six, thirty-eight, Oxford Street, sixteen Meadow Street Extension in the spur line, a portion of the spur line that's located in where it abuts uh the um the One Meadow Street Extension property on on the um east side um and butts um in between where it busts the the property and um and South Main Street um on on the east side of the One Meadow Street Extension property. Um, the um, so uh as a result uh of the um the pending approvals for those acquisitions, it's necessary to have in place uh sufficient funds. Um, hopefully those acquisitions will go forward as um armed armed like third-party voluntary transactions. Um, uh, so but there's always a possibility that they have to be by way of condemnation. And as a result, uh, we do need to have uh funds available should that uh we need to um commence a combination action, um because we would be required to deposit uh the average of our appraisal appraised values for the property, the subject property with the court. So the two point nine million dollars um again is is money that is left over um from um the normal school um construction projects uh that was previously approved. Um, it's essentially, the request is to um uh take uh from that line item um or deauthorize that line item and um transfer it to a new line item for the purposes of of funding these acquisitions. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I might just note that the this item has gone through review to the Common Council Land Use and Building Management Committee as well as was reviewed and approved uh yesterday to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I believe it's also gone through the B E T. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any questions or further question? Uh, Councilmember Ed Camacho.
I do have a question, and I'm sorry, I uh I may not have been paying attention and I apologize for that, but did you also uh talk about item B, the deauthorization of the two point nine million?
And what that's uh maybe not is uh in 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 the level of detail that it should have. Um, so the 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 deauthorization is simply necessary to off off offset the the authorization um for for the purposes of the acquisition. So currently, it's in an account um um for the Jefferson School improvements. And um it is authorized specifically only for that uh purpose uh by the B E T uh in a prior uh fiscal budget period, um probably a number of years ago now. Um, at this point, it's considered a free balance because um this this school project has been closed out and uh it's essentially leftover money. So um the request is to deauthorize that free balance, uh in other words, transfer it so it can no longer be used for that purpose and transfer into a new account for the specific purpose of acquiring these surrounding properties.
Are there any other further questions or comments? Uh, yes, Councilmember Brian Meek.
Uh, thanks. Probably a question for Henry or his team, but um are we, do we already have this money bonded or or how do we, how does the interest rate play? Are we, are we using the same interest rates from the Jefferson loan in place of this? How does that work?
Well, um please recall that we don't borrow money based on approved capital projects. We base money on cash flow forecasts because of the IRS requirements that when we borrow money for tax, tax-free for governmental purposes, there are certain spend-down requirements where we must spend those funds within a certain required timeline, usually two to four years. So what we do now is every quarter, the controller goes out to all of the department heads and chiefs who can control capital projects. And we ask them for a rolling two-year forecast quarter by quarter, so eight quarters forward. What are your cash flow expectations for the capital projects, both expenditures and any reimbursements? We often get uh state state grants to offset capital projects. And um the finance department uses those projections to determine how much we should borrow. We tend to borrow every summer, often in August. So the Jefferson School had a budget which was not totally utilized uh as properly described. The budget was available. It was already approved. And this resolution is repurposing that budget from that school to the South Norwalk School. Regarding the actual borrowing of funds, uh, I would assume that in the rolling forecast of cash flow, we will see these funds pop up and then we will use our borrowing capacity to offset it. Obviously, um even at year end, because it's a forecast, a cash flow forecast, we often have funds at the end of the year available for the expenditures. And then we supplement them as we just did in August for an additional seventy million. So from a cash point of view, we have the cash. And if it hasn't already been forecast, then it probably would be in next year's forecast and we borrow then.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, hearing or seeing none, uh Nora Nels, uh Councilmember Nora Nigelski-Eichner.
Very briefly to that point. Um, what is the timeline that we're currently anticipating for this acquisition? I know that it's not necessary to have these properties to complete the school. Um, but I'm just wondering where it falls in the overall timeline of this project.
So um, that's a great question. Uh, and um the answer is somewhat dependent on on how the interactions go with the um the various property owners. So um, the goal is to acquire the properties voluntarily. And the goal is to acquire those properties voluntarily quickly. Um there are a few things that are out of our control, um which would be negotiating a purchase-sale agreement. Um accessing the uh properties to conduct due diligence, uh changing, be anything from survey work to environmental um analysis. Um, and um there might be some other issues that crop up regarding um how to address tenancy issues. Um, but as for an outside date, um, the way the eminent domain statute works uh is that there is six months from the date of final approval by the common council to commence uh an eminent domain action. So one way or the other, um, six months from Sept- September thirteenth uh is is probably a good um outside date for acquisition.
And just to quickly follow up that on that then, Henry, we're comfortable that even if we need to put this money on deposit within the next six months, you have more than enough through the current bonding to be able to do so.
Yes, we have enough unexpended bond proceeds that if we had to shift and put a deposit down even before next year's financing, we are fine.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing and uh Councilmember Diana Revolus.
Um, thank you. This is probably a question. Not sure if it's a question or a comment. I just don't think it'll be able to be answered right now. Um, I'm just, and particularly with the as issue of like residence in this, do we happen to know or have an amount or of how many homes or residents will be displaced and what would be the incentives to help them? That might not be even in our foreset right now. This not even the conversation even in finance. I'm just wondering, is there a number or an understanding of how much that may have to be incurred in cost in that as well?
Um, it's a good question. Um, and the the answer is we we don't, we have limited information on it. Um, we do know that uh at least two of the properties uh are multifamily uh dwellings and have multiple tenants. Um, you know, in this instance, um, the relocation act would apply. We would apply the relocation act. Uh, and we have a relocation officer um that's uh works out of the Health Department. Um, usually you see relocations because of effectively when properties are condemned for health and safety reasons, and that's why uh it's staffed, the staff of the Health Department. Um, but as far as the overall cost, um, very, very difficult to estimate um uh what that that what that would be. It depends on a lot of factors that are really out of our control at this point.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I thought, like I said, I'm sure it may not be unanswered, but just wondering if we had a purview of kind of, I appreciate it. Thank you.
It's an issue we continue to analyze.
I appreciate it.
Okay, um, if there are no other questions or comments, I'll I'll call for the question. Uh, all those in favor of the resolution, item four A and B as presented, uh, please show by a raise of hand or verbal eye.
I.
Uh, although, thank you, uh, all those opposed have the same right. I see one, Councilmember Brian uh Meek. Um, any abstentions? I see none. So the motion passed with one, two, three, uh, six in favor and one opposed. Thank you. This item will now move to the full common council for review and approval for Tuesday, September twelfth uh council meeting. Moving on to item five, which is to review the proposed amendment to the description of available capital budget funds for the Bell Library Expansion Project and refer the following resolution to the Common Council for Action. And the resolution that we will be discussing hanging on reads as follows. Item five A, authorize to revise the project description for capital budget account number as noted. Current funding for building programming phase with design funding for building programming phase with design options and property acquisition. This project was approved ending twenty twenty with a budget of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, no actuals to date. Also, item five B, which reads follows, authorize to revise the project description for capital but account as noted. Current Belden Avenue Library Expansion Architectural Services proposed Bo- Belden Avenue Library Expansion Architectural Services and Property Acquisition. This project was approved in fiscal year ending twenty twenty-one with a budget of billion five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, no actuals to date. Do we have a move on this resolution?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Diana Revolus. Um, and we also have uh Darren Callahan, our legal counsel, who uh provide narrative to this item.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. You know, again, of course, uh, this, these things would have been presented by uh Mr. Lowe, but he's on vacation, so I'm doing my best to fill in his big shoes. Um, this is a a um, a um previously approved uh item of auth- auth- appropriate appropriation of funds um in two amounts, four hundred and fifty and one point seven five million. Um, the initial scope um uh uh of use of those funds were for architectural services and the um purpose of the resolution is to expand the scope of the uses of those funds to include property acquisition. Um, as as you know, uh, in addition to the six property uh adjacent to One Meadow Street Extension, uh, the city is also in mid-public approval process um to approve um the acquisition of a portion of eleven Belden being um the same geographical footprint as um the property that we were uh leasing for um additional parking facilities for the um or public library. So um, again, it's just a e- expansion of the scope uh of the previous uh uh funding light item um for these funds.
Thank you, Attorney Call. Do we have and again, this item did go through review of the Land Use Building Management Committee, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the B E T previous to this meeting. Uh, have any questions or comments as it relates to this resolution? Okay, uh, yes, Councilmember Brian Meek.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't understand the expediency of this. Isn't there uh we're gonna put all this money into a library that could end up being overshadowed by some ugly hotel next to it if the city loses its other interests over there? I mean, what what is the expediency of pushing this forward right now? Thanks.
Well, um I'm not sure that I necessarily qualified to answer that question. Um, it's my understanding that um uh that staff have identified um with the assistance of the library that um this this acquisition of this property was uh critical and time-sensitive in nature. Um and that's probably the depth of my understanding of of the timing issue.
I'll take a shot if I can. My understanding is that Alan Lowe has to get authorization so he can move forward with the acquisition of the six properties. And he needs a certain dollar amount of the acquisition. And so he previously approved authorization for the library going to be repurposed so that they can acquire the properties for the school. And that the library will come back next year in the capital budget and get replacement for this authorization that's being used now. It's not to authorize acquisition for the library at this time, to the best of my understanding.
Okay, that's uh much, much less muddy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other comments or questions at this point on this resolution? Okay, hearing seeing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor of uh this resolution, five A and five B, show by a verbal eye or raise of hand. Okay, and those opposed have the same right. Uh, we have one opposed, uh Councilmember Brian Meek. Any abstentions? I see the motion pass uh with um six in favor and one opposed. Thank you. And this item will also move to the full council for review and approval at the Tuesday, September twelfth, Common Council Meeting. Uh, the final item on the special agenda is item six, which is to recommend a special capital appropriation amount of two million dollars by the Building and Facilities Department for the following improvements at the new South Mall School, formerly the Hatch and Bailey Site at the intersection of South Main Street, Meadow Street, and Wilson Avenue. And the resolution reads that we will be uh reviewing and uh and voting on reads as follows, six A one, six A, authorize the allocation of two million dollars in special capital appropriation to the Building and Facilities Department for the following improvements at the new South Norwalk School, formerly the Hatch and Bailey Site at the intersection of South Main Street, Meadow Street, Wilson Avenue. A, one million dollars for intersection traffic improvements to be allocated to T M and P. B, one million dollars for intersection flood improvement to be allocated to D P W. Account number noted, Traffic Improvements, Norwalk Neighborhood School. This capital appropriation shall be funded through two million dollars of authorized for an unissued general general obligation bonds or notes of the city. The two million dollars of bonds or notes of the issued in accordance with provisions and terms set forth in the original bond resolutions that authorize the issuance of bonds or notes of the city for project account number as noted, Norwalk Neighborhood Schools. Item B, approve the deauthorization of one million dollars from free in the Ponos Ridge School Improvement Project Capital Budget Account Number as noted. And C, approve the deauthorization of one million dollars from free budget in the Jefferson School Improvement Project Capital Budget Account Number as noted. Do we have a motion on this resolution?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember DeLuce makes the motion. And uh again, this item has gone through review uh with the Land Use and Building Management, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the B E T. And um uh uh Darren or Joanne, I don't know who's leading the commentary on this item.
Sure, I'll I'll start off and if Joanne wants to um chime in at any point, please, please feel free to do so. So um this is very similar to the first uh resolution uh that we discussed uh effectively what's happening here is uh there was a uh a, there's a balance left over. Um, in this case, um, the construction project was Ponos Ridge school construction and Jefferson School construction. Uh, each have um a a balance of appropriated funds in the amount of a million dollars left over um at the time of project closeout. Um, those those amounts are essentially being transferred from from those accounts into a new account, uh, which could be, which will allow the funds to be used for half of the funds will be used for D P W to do um intersection flood improvements um at the intersection of South Main Meadow Street and Wilson Avenue. And the other million dollars um will go to T M P to um advance the design work of the road realignment at a minimum and probably road expansion um project um along South Main Street um to the point where it connects to um that intersection, South Main Meadow and Wilson Avenue. Now, Joan, just correct me where I might be wrong in that.
No, that that is exactly it. Yes. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Nora Nigelski-Eichner.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, Darren, just to clarify I go
Mostly inaudible.
Yeah, wait, wait.
Also, we're
Nora, we can't quite understand you.
Sidewalk, which I believe would go under D P T. Yeah, I thought that might be a problem. I will
Nora, Nora, could you maybe turn off your video and restate your question because we didn't hear the the first part of it?
Let me, yes, does that work? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes, much better.
Okay, my my apologies. Um, so I, my recollection is that we also were doing new sidewalks uh in the vicinity of the school, which would obviously fall under D P W. Is that, was that a different line allocation that we've previously have um approved? Or is this allocation for flood work also including that sidewalk work? Just want to make sure we don't lose sight of um that portion of the plan.
Yeah, so I I do know that um the intent is to do full right-of-way improvements, which would include the road in 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 the sidewalks. Um, it would also include um an access sidewalk from um the sidewalk along South Main Street um into directly into and over effectively what the what is the spur line right right now, um, but allowing inset access at probably about the midpoint uh of uh One Meadow Street Extension um directly to the school. So yes, sidewalks are included, including ones that are directly adjacent to South Main Street and also a sidewalk that would connect those adjacent to that adjacent sidewalk into the school property. Joanne, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, I I want to just add one thing. Um, it it is my understanding that It it is my understanding that they've already been allocated monies to improve the sidewalks on the other side, not on the spur line spur line side. So that maybe is what Councilwoman Nora is speaking of because that is already there. But this would be in addition to to that as well, to work on the sidewalks as well on the other side, on the spur line side so that there's a better right-of-way and drop-off area for students to be able to walk.
Okay, thanks. Very helpful. Thank you. And I guess my question is, I thought sidewalks were typically under D P W's purview. In this instance, the sidewalks will be under T M P's purview.
Yes, in this instance, yes, because it's going to go along with the reconfiguration of any stop signs and corners having to do with the road.
Okay, great. And you just wanted to make sure the funding was in the right place.
What's up?
Okay, any other questions or comments relating to this resolution? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of this resolution, I six A, B, and C, show by a raise of hand or verbal eye. All those opposed have the same right. Any abstentions? Brian, Councilmember Meeks, is that an
Sorry, last to pass me. That's a no vote. Thanks.
Okay, so we have six in favor of this motion, one opposed. So the motion passed and this motion resolution will move to the full common council on Tuesday, September twelfth for review and approval. With that, we move for adjournment. Thank you. All those in favor? I don't see any opposed or any abstentions. The motion passed. Thank you for your time and participation and have a great rest of the evening. Thank you. You stand adjourned.
You're welcome.